If at seven o'clock, the Planning Board will open their meeting in October 6th, our Planning Board meeting. And our first item on the agenda is approval of minutes, however, we don't have any minutes to approve, so I'll stop. The next item on the agenda is submission of new plans. Is there anybody here tonight to submit a new plan? No, I'll stop. Third item on our agenda is Twenty Water Street, the scenic road. And I'm going to read some things into the record, but while that's happening, if whoever is here for Twenty Water Street, if they run from down, that's fine. So in accordance with Mass GL Chapter 40, Section 15C, the Scenic Road Act, the Sandwich Planning Board and the Sandwich Tree Ward will hold a joint public hearing on October 6th at the request to remove a black locust tree obstructing exiting from the driveway at Twenty Water Street Sandwich, Mass, map 73, console 146. We're here in the upstairs meeting room, you know, we're all here. The publication dates were September 11th and 18th. And I do have a few things to read into the public hearing for comments that we've done. This was submitted by Frank Colombo on October 1st. Please record me as being firmly opposed to the removal of the black locust at the driveway entrance at Twenty Water Street and Sandwich. The tree has stood for many years and deserves to stand many more. That portion of Water Street needs to be guarded against further modernization. Thank you, Frank Colombo. That was from him. And then October 1st, I also received word from the Sam Jensen, Assistant Town Engineer at the Engineering Department, has reviewed the subject application and offers the following comments. "The application requests permission to remove one locust tree from the Water Street layout to improve site distance of the subject driveway. Records indicate that Water Street was designed as a scenic road by Town Meeting and appears with trees within the Water Street layout." So makes it us. Then the Department agrees that removal of the tree would improve site distance and safety at the subject location. From Dave DeConte, Assistant Director of Natural Resources, September 9th. "Conservation Commission has removed the application for property at Twenty Water Street. This property is within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission under the Massachusetts Woodlands Protection Act. However, this portion of the property does not fall within our jurisdiction. If any further work is needed on this property, they're willing to contact the Department of Natural Resources." And from Paul Spiro. Yes, I think. Can you see that this one's from?
No, that's just a distribution list.
Okay.
People who like, yeah, that's the name.
And then, of course, we have the subject, pictures of the subject tree. So with that, Justin, it's not for Jordan, so would you like to make some comments on this?
I think I'll visit the site. I do understand your point of view from, you know, where, you know, pulling out of the driveway, we hit the public camp that way. It is a locust tree, had utility proved in the past, so I'd be okay with the removal of the tree, but just in lieu of that, you do have to make a decision to replace that tree. And it's a tree and a half for every tree that's removed. So you need to do that if the board approves a removal of the tree. And also, since there has been an objection to the tree, if the board does okay the removal, have to go with those, looking for final setting.
Do we have an applicant?
Yes. I presume you've all seen a photograph of the driver's view.
Did you say your name?
Oh, my name is Travis Lee Camp, I write Jaffin, he can't, on Water Street. I presume you've all seen the view from the driver's side, looking out the window as you're exiting the driveway to the right. The tree definitely obstructs the view partially. The reason for removing it is, if you look to the left, there's a similar hazardous situation which can't be changed, and that's the rise and the hell of a changing world by the Burges property and the Oxy Hops. And as cars are coming down there, you must have total attention on the left side because that is the closest approach for fast-moving cars. Now admittedly, there are seasons there, but if you're going twenty miles an hour, that's something with fifty feet per second. Looking to the right for the tree obstructs. If we had a longer vision, we could get two or three more seconds' time to concentrate on the more dangerous route to the left. In other words, as I turn to the right, I mean, one thousand and one, one thousand and two seconds, folks, cars that travel more than a hundred feet pushes more than the few that you care. You have been lucky for twenty years. Lucky in that sometime. And so, two reasons. One is for safety of exiting the street. The other, incidentally, if it only looks up high, it's an angle with the electrical wires. Moving one tree and electrical wires won't prevent per se the next outage in town, but every tree that is disentangled from power lines improves the reliability of the electrical distribution system. So our request for our concern for safety in terms of exiting, we would like to see. I had thought I had understood the tree is in on the panel property.
Yes. If DeConte letter is a reference to, not a P D, but within jurisdiction of conservation, so it sounds like it's not anywhere.
So in any case, it's a matter of safety for none of ourselves, but visitors are actually in the driveway to avoid the accident. Are there any questions that we can answer for you? Yes, sir.
I think, you know, my question is why after twenty years?
Why? Maybe running out.
I think I know the answer, but.
Yeah, well, first of all, the speed limit coming toward our house in Town Hall is thirty miles an hour, the other direction is twenty-five miles an hour. If you stood there with radar, a lot of those trucks and cars that are in forty, forty-five miles an hour. So not only do they go fast, there's a lot more traffic as they're rolling through.
That's what I have assumed has become the issue, because I know that there's tremendous , you know, greater amount of traffic traveling on Route 130. And I'm very hesitant to have a tree down on the scenic road unless there is a safety issue. I mean, that is the one exception we're supposed to make for trees of this nature. And, you know, I know, living in that village, I know that the traffic has increased tremendously on Route 130, especially it seems since the lights were both executed, I don't know why. I think it's because they come in waves now, but there does seem to be an awful lot of traffic coming around the way wherever it was.
If it would make you feel any better, there is another locust tree growing that I've allowed to grow seven years ago of twenty feet away from this locust tree, and that there is a growth of about three feet a year, it's already forty feet high. So, hey, there's another one growing where this one would come down. It's an effective, a safety concern of ours, not for ourselves, but for visitors who come and need.
Justin, I have a question for you. Did the tree sustain any damage over the last winter? Locustes traditionally don't stand up well, so really harsh winters, but did this tree in particular sustain any damage last year?
No, I mean, it's been, like I said, it's been utility-proofed, so it's fairly clean. So it's not like, you know, a lot of the trees that we have, they're just, you know, out, you know, out somewhere, they're just kind of on their own. So in that case, it's, you know, it's clean, it doesn't seem that much damage in it, if any. And it is where it is protected from, like, their house towards the road, because it's in that room that lives an alcoa there. So, I mean, the tree, you know, overall, it's, for where it is, it's in danger.
I have another question. On the exchange program, is there any indication from the town by law, and I refer to this, as to where replacement trees would be planted?
No, usually we try to find a place where it's suitable to replace one, like, we have some spots on the community house, where they did a planting a few years ago, some of those trees had died. So that'd be an area to identify, there's some parks in town, you know, so we wouldn't put something back.
Obviously, even if it wasn't similar to a locust?
Correct.
Okay, so basically, that canopy at that spot is gone, if it goes, it's gone from.
No, I mean, you have, the way that everything grows on that road is almost directly across the street. You have that plum is linden, and I think that it was at one point, one of the biggest trees in the region. Or, okay, I know that one, there's one really big one. So the canopy there is established, and the majority of it comes from the other side because of the utility lines coming down that way. So, I mean, that tree that stands out more like a piece of broccoli, you know, for lack of a better description. So removing it, you know, it is a scenic road, I understand that, but in the grand scheme of a tree in nature, it's not really where it would be natural.
The board?
Yep. I think that naturally, a black locust is not a very bad of a tree, it's a weed tree, it just happens to be, you know, successful in present condition. I do not feel that the loss of that tree in that location is a major issue relative to canopy. I do, however, think that there shouldn't be any precedent setting that a tree coming out of a location in a historic district should be replaced in that location, maybe not right on your property line, it's all around the middle of the location, that I think another species of shade tree, more ornamental tree would be a better suit for this particular site.
Sorry? Safety first, for me.
Hi, I think the safety factor, you know, crossed my mind there. We want to make sure, now taking trees down, then we should reinforce any renovations that are needed, you know, there's a safety speed limit issue. But I would suggest these two work logs, that it's really congestion as well, not just speed. So I would say that if it's a safety issue, it needs to seriously considered.
Doc?
I just have to, this is a very narrow frame. I think there was another picture that existed, possibly, of what the view was from, right now, your, this vehicle was very narrow frame, you're on the sidewalk, and your, and your line of sight, that's a very narrow frame. What's, if you kept your vehicle back, what's the line of sight on the other side of the street?
It's even worse.
The other problem is, well, this is the other direction, in order for them to see what's coming, this would be.
They should see a picture from that direction.
Because if you're back, I actually went down to their way. If you're further back, you do get a better view of this direction, but you get no view of the direction from your left, so then you still have to move place into this place to see, to see that, and then you've got the, you've got the foot coming from your left.
And so when they, when the applicant said that if there was a way to mediate the opposite side, then they probably wouldn't have to go this route, but because of what's on the other side, they, they have to position their car to the point where now the tree is completely blocking the view. So what goes? Somebody's personal property on the left side or the tree on the right? As far as sight?
And I can recognize that over twenty years, that the vehicles have changed, you know, and the traffic in town has changed also, but are we talking about, is this a speeding issue or is this a tree issue?
Well, that's what Laura said. If, if, if it, we need to address whatever the problem is. It doesn't mean that we're taking a step back from our care, custody, control of the scenic roads, but is the problem really a speeding issue? But we all know what's going to happen with that. The speed limit is there. It's twenty-five coming down from the stool, and it's thirty, thirty going up. So nobody does either of those speeds. And that's all over town, but how do you get anywhere about? Plus, we're a tourist town, so a lot of people in town pay no attention to any speed limits. Am I right?
Maybe I should.
May I make an additional comment? I don't think it's been mentioned yet, but very, within months after we moved into that house, the town put up a sign in the middle of the blind driveway. And I think that exacerbates cars coming from Town Hall. Our house is not close to the road, it's that way down. So they don't, I think most people probably, unless you look, when you realize there's a driveway with a car coming out.
There's a pedestrian issue here too. It's, we are, as a community, trying to increase tourism, trying to increase opportunities for other activities within the center that would increase the use of sidewalks for the sidewalks that are always that come. I generally think that we ought to be more respectful in the future and some of the more critical paths, safety issues than we're currently thinking about.
I know, this is a public hearing, so we're, we want to hear from the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this particular issue right now about this tree? You guys, I'm gonna give the tree, yes, Dylan. Would you say your name for the record?
My name is Don Stainbrook, and I live in a historic neighborhood that this lady gentleman lived in. Just one little comment. We have enjoyed an explosion of traffic in Sandwich this season. There are recent reports, but we have enjoyed that explosion of traffic. I have ridden on the shuttle, probably a third of the number of runs that day. And one of the interesting facts is that the shuttle, as it's coming up Water Street and stops in front of the Oxy House we have, you looked it to the back, and there's a line of traffic that you would not believe. So I can understand why, for twenty years, the long-suffering residents on Water Street have not really had to put up with that kind of traffic. The shuttle, I think, was a very, very success, however, it didn't alleviate any of the traffic problems. And so I sympathize with their safety concern, given the eye of the driver. Thank you. I have one final.
Oh, you can make as many comments as you like.
And that is, one of you had suggested, well, we've done it for twenty years, why can't you do it for another twenty years? But I have confessed that, but I tell you, many times, I have had honking horns at the coming up from the left of me pulling out of the driveway, and the drivers having to brake because I couldn't see them coming up the hill. And so, again, I've been lucky, and people, fortunately, most drivers, even if they're speeding, have some sense to them, but I'm just worried about the future, that I'm going to be so lucky, we won't be so lucky in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Does the board need further time to, just?
Well, I'd just like to say that I agree with Bill in that I think that if we're going to replace a tree, it should be replaced with a majestic shade tree within the historic district, if one is being removed. And I also would agree that that particular tree does not offer a great deal of canopy as it stands, but, you know, maybe a new majestic shade tree somewhere else in the village, maybe, or maybe on the other side of the driveway, or the back of their driveway would be a nice addition there, I don't know. But I do think we should replace the tree within the, within the historic district, since it's going to be out of the historic district.
Well, I take a vote to, if there's no other comment, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
I think the one should be closed, public hearing on the removal of the tree at Twenty Water Street.
And do I have a second on closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing on the scenic road permit application is closed. We'll probably deliver it tonight, I'm sure we can do that, if you want to.
Your choice.
Do we have deliberation?
Yes.
Well said. So, so I don't think we need an actual form, we can just make a recommendation to the tree ward, okay?
To select one.
Which goes, which has to go to the selection anyway. So I hear a recommendation on whether to, a vote to recommend removal of the black locust tree or not removal of the black locust tree? And did hear some stipulations in there, so maybe the vote should contain that, if we'd like to.
I'll make a recommendation to the board that we vote for removal of this tree, getting the stump, and the, to be replaced on or near the local planned property, and that the replacement should be a native shade tree, no less than three-inch tall.
Do I have a second?
One, sorry, I'm saying, in the stump removal portion, where that tree sits, probably the best thing, is to grind the stump, because if we go home, that stump could get old, we don't know what's under there, like water, stuff like that, plus you got, I'm just, you know, so.
So, so what I'm hearing is, is you'd like to amend the, the motion to, rather than full removal, a smooth grinding of the stump.
Low grade.
Low grade. Now, is there a second on that?
We'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Is this a roll call? No. All in favor, yes. All right, so I believe that was unanimous. Bob, Bob came second. This one's going back to you. And they're all done?
Yes, thank you very much for your consideration.
It does have to go to, our recommendation was to forward it to this selection as a removal, but because it's very contested, it will have to be approved by them as well. All our recommendations have to be approved by the selection as well. So that's the next one. You're very welcome. Our next, our next item on the agenda is our public hearing for proposed amendments to the Sandwich protective zoning bylaws for the B2 zoning district. Our planning development director is, has a PowerPoint. I did want to make one note, comment before we start. In the hearing notice, there was advertised on September 18th and September 25th, it was very clear that part of our protective zoning bylaw amendments that we're making was a ground-mounted solar amendment specifically for the BL2, the area. Now, I know that we've been dealing with ground-mounted solar at our last meeting, we also had a public hearing, but it was an entirely different area of town, that was in the BL1 down by Tupperboro. So I don't want anybody to confuse the fact that the, that this particular solar zoning amendment that we're looking at tonight has nothing to do with our last meeting, which was the solar amendment that we did for the BL1 or the Tupperboro. Two completely different, I think that there was an article in the Sandwich Enterprise, and it confused the issue, the author of the article very much confused the issue. He thought we were dealing with still Tupperboro, we are not. That is gone. That, we had our public hearing, we made our recommendations and votes, and that is long gone, that was BL1. Tonight is the BL2. So, just in case anybody had a confusion, I certainly did when I read the article in the Enterprise, because I thought to myself, this is, something's wrong here. We're not talking about Tupperboro tonight, we had no intention of talking, we hashing a former public hearing, so, just to let you all know that. And I have to read into the public sample. So the Planning Board of the Town Sandwich here by gives notice that they'll hold a public hearing on Tuesday of October 16th at seven, excuse me, in the upstairs meeting room where we are, so I can bring house road, to modify Section 2600 intensity and view schedule to allow height of up to seventy feet under certain conditions in the B2 zoning district per note in the use schedule, and to modify Section 4182 procedure to allow large-scale ground-mounted solar byway in the B2 zoning district, also the same district. A full text of the proposed amendments include complete copy of the current Sandwich protective zoning laws on file. And as I stated earlier, the publication dates were September 18th and September 25th. And I have two, just notes you received on October Monday, October 5th, from Jason and Maria Karista, Karisti of Windmill Bogway. We are in favor of responsible development of the Golden Triangle area in South Sandwich. We are also in favor of the zoning amendments that are being considered by the Planning Board to be submitted for a vote at special town meeting to amend current height and ground-mounted solar restrictions in that zone with general setbacks that will minimize aesthetic impact on surrounding areas. I also have a, on October 6th, on Monday, from Lois Black of 270 Mountain Service Road, I am in favor of responsible development of the Golden Triangle area. I am also in favor of zoning amendments to be forwarded for consideration at Sandwich Town Meeting to allow height and solar for the current proposal with general setbacks. And also from Amanda Sullivan on October 5th. I do not have an add list for Amanda, who is also in favor of responsible development of the Golden Triangle, surprisingly similar. I am also in favor of zoning amendments to be forwarded for consideration to the Sandwich Town Meeting to allow height and solar for the current proposal with setbacks to minimize visual impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. So three citizens, these are, these were from citizens. We don't have any other notes on that, and with that, I will open up the public hearing. We have a couple of things. No, because in action, I don't think, I think, nothing from the five talks, correct? No, because there's no, no direct communication, because there's actually no calls are from an applicant. So, and there's no direct communications to the Planning Board for this, there's also no other notifications from the zoning board or any other ones in town. No, it doesn't, okay.
Communications have come through my office. Okay, I'll score on that.
So, do you want to give your presentation first, and then we'll talk, and then we'll hear from you?
Yeah, you want it?
No? I would love it.
Okay, all right, thanks, everybody. You don't know, my name is Blair Hayne, I'm the Director of Planning and Development of the Town Sandwich. My friend is Josh Peters, he's Assistant Town Planner. So, we're going to give a quick presentation. It's going to, largely around the proposal, but we all know this, pretty much a development project sort of pending, so to separate the two would be difficult, but really, at the end of the day, if this is only going to go carrying through one property, should the development proposal actually not go forward. So, this is a quick agenda, this is what we're going to do, we're going to go over the site location, try to help steer everybody oriented, so we know what we're talking about, the area, a little bit of history and actions by the town with regards to parcel land that area, a little bit of history and actions by the town with regards to parcel land that we have been trying to sell, go into the zoning amendments and some thoughts to consider on that, and then I say question and answer, but it's essentially, you know, public testimony at that point.
So, like a name for, are we doing solar first and then?
Ah, they're all, it's all about the area. So, yeah, this is kind of a basic slide that came from the pack, the concept lines that developers submitted, it helps brand everybody, we all know where we are in Sandwich. This right here is Route 6, this is exit 2, come down 130, and then this is the Golden Triangle. The parcel plan that we put up for RFP is that area in gray. So, that's a little bit of context. Next, next slide. This is effectively the Golden Triangle, pretty much all your maps and plans are oriented with north going up. So, again, this is 130 coming down here to the intersection with QMH, over to the intersection with Tuit, and back up. The heritage plaza is in here, the area in center. The dotted white line represents the land that the town put out to RFP, put it out to staff with solicited responses for how to develop it. So, that's the area right here. The current pot water fields are right here, and then this is obviously their stop and out plaza. This is what they showed us a while ago, they're talking about an entrance off of 130 in addition to 100 of QMH, all your sports fields, you see on the perimeter, you have the parking, and then of course the white represents the vertical paths, the main building here being the sports field and then hotels in this location. So, again, Kuituut out here, QMH and 130. So, this is, this represents what we're talking about.
Actually, it doesn't. Is there more land involved on the, the zones?
No, that's not it. Yes, no, definitely, that's the problem.
And you got to show the whole area, so you can, okay.
So, maybe we put out an RFP, it's basically about 56 acres, and it's been referred to as South Sandwich or Center, the Golden Triangle. And it represents land the town has assembled over years. We have been trying to assemble this land and sell it since 1997. You can see we've had action on this area, we're coming up on 20 years now. This response to the RFP represents the fourth time we've put it out to RFP. That means we've done it three prior times with bits that didn't pan out for different reasons, but this represents the fourth time we've attempted to sell this land. You can see the years, the past responses, we've seen mostly residential, commercial, retail, there's just not much of an appetite for it. Two of the eight proposals, this being one of them, and then the most recent proposal in 2013 was the other one, I'll talk about that in a little bit. But you can see, I might go over every one of them, but there's been six town meeting actions related specifically to this parcel in terms of, in terms of selling it. So, we've taken quite a lot of steps, made quite a lot of effort to try and sell this land and get development on it. Here's a couple of, the first two represent specific amendments to the zoning bylaws that we've done, again, to help support development here. We created a development agreement by law, which allows the town to enter into a agreement of development, which gets more into the specifics that like a purchase and sale agreement would. We also changed our wastewater language, it used to be about just public wastewater treatment facilities, we added in the language that allowed private wastewater treatment plants to be developed and support ultimately development in that area. And then tonight, two proposals, again, I'll go into more detail with these, but this is, actions that have been proposed. We worked with Cape Cod Commission, we've worked with UMass Dartmouth, and, you know, again, we worked with the commission as well on this last one, all in effort to support development at different times, in different capacities at this site. So, why hasn't it sold in the past? Well, we've got a lot of constraints for development. We see Bruce's proposal was put forward by the gentleman TRT, who owns Heritage and a lot of that land just north of there. Basically, they're proposing, they're offering more money, but they're also requiring to put in roads and wastewater treatment systems. It was effectively voted down by the selectmen as seen as a net loss, given the amount of infrastructure utilities we would have had to put on. So, that's really the only other commercial development proposal that has been put forward besides this one. Everything else is residential.
What about the Shaws? The Shaws market that was proposed about six, seven years ago?
Actually, 10.
10, okay.
Yeah.
That was denied for purchase.
2004, that was 2004.
Actually, they moved on because of the next one.
I can, I can, just, just so you understand, Shaws could never have gone in there because it couldn't have, it couldn't have mitigated its hazardous waste, because this is a water recharge area. So, for Shaws to, excuse me, I'm answering a question that this gentleman asked, I don't expect anybody to talk out of turn. Unless the stop and shop closed, Shaws could not have gone in there because it couldn't have mitigated the quantity of what they would carry on their shelves. So, that was never going to go through at all. Just so you know in the future, and specifically because this is a water recharge area, which is why we cast zoning for private wastewater treatment mitigation.
Exactly. And this next one speaks to that point as well, it's DEP Zone 2 well protected area, this limits wastewater discharge by requiring extremely low nitrogen disposal for discharge. Most of that section of the site is in the Pompano Saffay watershed, which is an impaired watershed. The northern part of the site is actually outside of it, it's in the, discuss it, and that one is not impaired right now. There's limited site access, right now, there's only access is off of QMH, and there's limited direct roadway exposure, so retail is, is difficult at that site. Just generally speaking, commercial development on the Cape, 56 acres is a very, very large piece of land, it's a very difficult piece of land to be able to develop and have users, end users for all the physical space you could end up creating on 56 acres. So, just really hasn't been that much appetite for it, as we've seen in our responses. Which has sparked, you know, why don't the town subdivide it? Well, in order to subdivide, you have to build a roadway, which the town would have to incur the cost of, as well as the utilities and other infrastructure, not to mention, we'd have to carry the ball through the Cape Cod Commission and the permitting process. So, this is not something that the selectmen have shown an appetite for, and we really don't know the absorption rate of individual commercial lots, you know, on Cape Cod. So, selling it all as one piece has been what the selectmen have been pushing for, hence why we keep going out to bid to try and find something that's, that wants to do something of that magnitude. Again, I know that this is a zoning amendment, but it's a question that keeps coming up. When I've been talking to people, is, how does this work? What are we talking about here? What's the proposal? Well, what they're looking to do is they would invite teams and groups to the facility as a destination, it would participate in tournaments, camps, leagues, and, you know, for, as an example, a whole family might travel to the facility, they can make a week vacation out of a weekend tournament, that might be something that they might integrate, bring the whole family along. The hotel on site and what Cape Cod has to offer, it creates a destination, that would just a sports oriented facility. So, that's effectively what they're talking about doing from a, the major part of the revenue stream is actually bringing in tournaments, bringing in camps, bringing in leagues. However, the fieldhouse that we're talking about, that was going to go up to 70 feet, is very easily converted into a convention center. It relies in that kind of space on the Cape, and it's another way of bringing in people to use the facility. You're talking car shows, flower shows, trade shows, somebody wants to do a tech conference, they have the facilities there, the infrastructure in place, the hotel, in addition to the convention center. So, again, it creates that type of use and that, and that user group. Because both of these, their market is really everything, local, regional, and the national audience. They're going to be appealing to people all throughout the country, it isn't just Cape people, it isn't just Plymouth and Marston County, it's a larger spectrum of, of audience, and bringing in groups at a time, that's, that's how they're planning to operate, that's how they're going to be. The hotel, in and of itself, can even support non-sports users or non-facility users, people that are just on vacation. There are some people out there that prefer big branded hotels, they don't want to do hotels, multiple hotels or B and B style facilities. There's going to be people that want that, that's all they want, but there's going to be people that want something different, it just depends, it's a different audience group, you don't look at the full of our area. One point to note, which goes back to previous conversations, they are proposing to build all the utilities and all their infrastructure, they're not asking the town to absorb anything. So, here are the proposed zoning amendments, this is why we're here, this is what we're talking about. There's two. The first one is we're allowing maximum, is the proposal is to allow maximum height of up to 70 feet, if a minimum of 500 feet of public roadway. I know we've talked about this in the past, this number may, was discussed as possibly being increased, and, and we're going to show an example of increased offset in the visuals we have in a couple of slides, but this is what was advertised, so I'm sort of moving forward on this presumption. And then the other is to allow ground mounted solar by special permit in the B2 district. This is the B2 district, obviously.
How many B2 districts are there in town?
There's two sections, there's this one, and there's an area just south of the exit 2 off of Route 6. It's where there's three buildings right now, medical facility buildings, that you see on the right here, driving down 130. And that proposal to increase that number would take that out of the equation here. So, again, I'll show it to you. This is what it would look like in the zoning bylaw, it's the same, the same thing, right here in our intensity abuse schedule, you see maximum height for the B2 district is 35 feet. We put in footnote R that brings you down to here, and it says effectively what's up here, the B2 district, you're allowed a maximum height of 70 feet if you're more than 500 feet from a public roadway. Again, this is what it would look like in our bylaws, section 4180, we're adding in the B2 district in the location where we say which zoning district's allowed for ground mounted solar. All right, just to bring us back, now we're going to start showing where that offset, what that looks like. Again, 130, Tuit, QMH, this is the site. This is the approximate location of the fieldhouse as they proposed it, and this is, proposed about 70 feet tall. This is where the hotel would be, and that's a little bit shorter, about 66 feet tall. And then this shows a couple of things. One, these are all vertical paths as they're laid out on the site as proposed. This yellow line currently, excuse me, currently represents where 500 feet offset from the roadways would look like. So, this yellow line would represent the area that's allowed to go up to 70 feet. A suggestion of the planning board, and as I showed, I mentioned, there is another section of B2, we wanted to take that out of the equation and to focus it here. So, the next slide pushes the line up to 650 feet offset, so it's a much smaller area as you can see right now. That would ensure that the areas that are affected by this zoning proposal is just what we see on this map, doesn't include anything to the north, and it does include the vast majority of, of the site that they have here. It does take out all the parcels that are along here that have an offset of about 600 feet. It does leave a little bit on the backside of some of these developed parcels and then this open area in here. This picture is just to overlay their proposal in the full site, just to show you again what it looks like. As you can see, right now they're proposing four phases to build out, and this is what it would look like.
Blair, when you're done, will you go back to the clearest of all of them you did out for us?
Sure. All right, so, pointing a 70 foot structure. This is in ascending heights. The one to build here is a boxy form of what is hotel and sports camp and the fieldhouse. There would be more architecture, aesthetically pleasing than what they're showing here, this is just a mock-up by my, my staff for the purposes of this discussion. So, this is what that looks like. This is the high school, and the high school vast majority is at 40 feet. What's interesting is that the auditorium, where you all go for your town meetings and school events, is actually 75 feet tall. So, there is a 75 foot structure in town already in place. Town hall peak is 41, their JVCC water tower is 197, so almost three times the size of what we're proposing here. Pot water field lights go very thin, are 70 feet tall. And then you can of course see energy and their stacks. So, that's some comparable, not comparable, but like other tall structures in town to give you a point of reference. This table here takes some of these structures and adds a whole lot more information to it. Obviously, vantage point is always a big thing in terms of like, how am I going to experience this 70 foot tall structure? Am I going to see it, is it going to be up in my face, is it going to be a ways away? It changes your viewing angle. So, we've just added in a lot of information here for people to look over about what their height is, what the elevation is to the structure, is it a low point, your vantage point is high, or vice versa? What's between you and the structure? Is it right up on the roadway, meaning you're just staring right at something that's 40 feet tall, like town hall is? Or is it something that's really off in the distance because the public roadway is here and the structure or whatever it might be is, is 1,000 feet away? And then what's between you and that? Is it just cleared land or is it trees? So, I think it adds to the narrative of how you experience tall structures in the town of Sandwich. And these are again, the same ones that are up here, and you can see, let's, see this information in this table. This is again, approximate distances to give you a point of reference and an understanding as it's been proposed. At its closest from 130, it's 1,050 feet, 1,100 feet on this side, 1,200 from QMH, and then almost 1,200, 1,200, 1,200, 1,300 from Kuituut. So, that gives you a sense of what your lateral distance is from the actual structure. And then we did a quick line of sight study just to see what it looks like. It's kind of ridiculous, it works if you're holding it, but right here is a little star, that's a two scale person, you know, a six foot tall, I don't know what size, or a six foot tall person, and what their line of sight is when you have 1,100 feet, 1,050 feet between you and a structure that's 70 feet tall. So, this is what that looks like to scale. You have all of this, it could be all vegetation, or it could be vegetation, stop and shop, and then field space behind it, but this is what your line of sight looks like from that type of distance. And it gives you, it gives you an example of what a 70 foot structure viewed from 1,000 feet away would look like in terms of how you experience it from a public roadway. One of the things that's come up, and you had mentioned this earlier, had, had public safety communicated, I spoke to Chief Black and Chief Carrico, and Chief Carrico was kind enough to do this on his own. He took their ladder truck, this is actually a picture of their driveway of the fire station, and extended up the bucket part of their ladder truck, and then dropped and take measure. And if you set their truck here and then you have a structure here, if they're six feet away, the base of their firefighting capabilities of, from the base of the bucket is 90 feet, and that's at six feet away, which is, you know, also a pretty small distance. So, what they did in the next slide, they pushed themselves So what they did in the next slide, they pushed themselves further out, about twenty-two feet from the base of the structure, and they still had eighty-four feet of clearance to be able to fight on top of a seventy-foot structure. So you can see that for him, and he stated this, they don't have a problem fighting fire from a seventy-foot structure. And in, you know, they did the photographs, and this, you know, hand this graphic to represent that and how it works out, how the geometry works out. Additionally, I spoke to Chief Black, I spoke to several locations that have these, and has stated there's nothing in the way of increased crime or increased public safety in terms of what they have to respond to. So he's weighed in and doesn't have a problem, supports the amendment from a public safety perspective. So obviously, what I'm trying to do is part of my job as the Director of Economic Development, and part of what a lot of this project comes down to, what this proposal does, is support economic development. So I just wanted to touch on a few things as it relates to that topic. These are some of the economic development conditions in town that I think are relevant. Eighty-five percent of our town is residential zone, meaning only a very small fraction of it is zoned for commercial. So if we're trying to bring in tax revenue, if we're trying to bring in development for the purpose of bringing in tax revenue, we're very, very limited by what we can do. Not in areas and not in locations. As you can see, it only represents fifteen percent of our land area. Twenty-five percent of our town, based on age, is on a fixed income. So obviously, tax increases, but the only other way to increase revenue for a community, unless you bring in new development, is, you know, becomes a big hit for someone that's on a fixed income. And to that same degree, to that same point, for the last twenty years, we've seen an eighteen percent increase in the age of our population, the average age of our population here, which means we're getting older. So this number of only twenty-five percent is steadily building up. Last point I want to make, you know, when it comes to the jobs, residents in this town are commuting away from Sandwich at a much higher rate than they used to. In nineteen seventy, it was only seven percent of our workforce was leaving the town. Now we're over twenty-five percent. So on a maximum like upshot side of what this project represents, could represent, you know, if we're talking a two hundred, two hundred and fifty million dollar project after full buildout, this equates to roughly, based on just general assessment, assessor practices, about two to three million dollars in new tax revenue. Project site is about four miles away from town hall, it's about two miles away from Route two, uh, from exit two off of Route six. So its impact on the village character, the historic village character is pretty limited by virtue of that distance. And as we know, that area, that little triangle, has a lot of commercial uses right now. A wastewater treatment plant would have to be proposed as part of this project, there's no way around it, we're going to have to do that. Anybody that's going to do a wastewater treatment plant is going to build it big enough to support other, other existing businesses. The amount of wastewater that's feeding into it, it brings the cost down, so she becomes a shared cost. So they're obviously going to want to find partners within the area to utilize the wastewater treatment facility. This ultimately reduces our nitrogen loading in the parrot water body. Right now, as part of the two oh eight plan, the other just general conversation that DEP is having with the Barstool County, our TMVLs, total maximum daily loads of nitrogen, is getting to the point where we're going to have to start doing steps towards reducing this and taking away some of the nitrogen that's impacting the estuaries in Barstool County that we trade into. And there may be, there are one solution that we actually just went to check, and that goes towards fixing some of these problems that we're having with the estuaries in this area. If we can start to reduce the amount of nitrogen loaded that we have, it's another cost benefit to this project, reduces our burden, because the way they calculate it is based on how much are you feeding down there. If we have more wastewater systems going into a treatment facility, again, reducing your burden. Last point to make on the slide is that the LCP was approved by town meeting and commercial development in this location is an approved goal. So the recommendations are that, well, as part of the data gathered in the first parts of the LCP, it says that the market study shows that the town of Sandwich is weak in recreational services as an industry. Policy goals that were put in place in the recreation section, a state which facilitate development, and two specific areas, for-profit entertainment opportunities, and it specifically said a high-quality sports facility. And the LCP was done several years ago, long before this project was proposed, years ago. So this is not something that just came in overnight, it's been viewed as a potential opportunity for a period, for a long period of time. These are some of the endorsements that we've received for the zoning amendments. We're selected Sandwich Economic, the SIC City, Sandwich Economic Initiative Corporation, Cape Cod Canal Chamber of Commerce, Sandwich Chamber of Commerce, Fire Chiefs, and then, you know, the planning board, question mark. And that's the end of my presentation.
Will you pay up, will you find, Josh, will you find the one that's the clearest? Kind of light, it's light in color, if you go back outside of the original.
And which in particular?
Uh, we're looking for V, we're looking for, keep going.
It's at the beginning.
Uh, no, okay. No, I don't like that one. I want something that's lighter than that.
The next one.
Uh, keep going. Key, yeah, these slides, probably the third one now, maybe? Yeah, keep going, the one that you can see green on. Yeah, those two. Can we have one of those, just so everybody can really see the, you can see the yellow lines, you can see the somewhat.
Is there a chance that we can dim the lights a little so that...
We can, we can dim the lights a little bit too, that could help with seeing the actual visual. Uh, I didn't bring the camera. Yeah, maybe leave those lights on, although we can't, because we'll have to see. So thank you very much for that presentation. Oh, shall I just open this up to?
Let's open it.
Open it up. Open it up. And I would ask that if you, once you've been selected to stand, if you please give your name and address so we have it for the record. We have a recording tonight. We do have a visual in the back, but it's more of a recording as well. So please, you name and your address when you, and what I'm going to do is, and I've done this at other big meetings, I go right and then left. So right first.
Thank you very much.
My right.
My name is Blair Dyson. I live at four Avon Drive in Sandwich, and I appreciate you putting this picture up because I live right about at the top right-hand corner where that neighborhood is right there, right up in that area.
So is Avon Drive off of Hickory? Is it off of?
Yes, it's off of Hickory.
It's off of the Canterbury neighborhood. Yeah, in the Canterbury neighborhood.
That's correct. First of all, in the Canterbury neighborhood, we're very concerned about this development because the RFP that was sent out was actually initiated by the SIC. The SIC had written to me and told me that they had gone out and met with these particular developers, and then brought them into the board of selection, and they were made aware that the RFP was being made available. We never in this town actually went out and tried to see companies that would give us full-time jobs in the area. There are no concerns about nitrogen impact, as you said, Mr. Haney. If we have something like seven fields, we use artificial turf, there's going to be a terrible chemical impact. If we use real turf, there's still going to be a tremendous impact in nitrogen. You said that the developer was going to pay for everything, and according to the SIC notes that I've been reading, they're actually thinking of floating a bond, and that has been encouraged, that they'd be floating a three-year bond, twenty-five-year bond, that the taxpayers would basically support their wastewater development mitigation.
Well, the applicant can float their own bond, that wouldn't be the town's floating bond.
Well, no, this is, that's true, but twenty-three. But to get back to this particular issue, when Mr. Haney showed you the pictures of the seventy-foot hike, he shows it as if there's trees on them. There is no tree cover between Stop and Shop right here and all down here. It's commercial buildings. These are seventy-foot-high lights. We can see poplar as you drive by. They're extremely bright, you can really see them dramatically. They can't have an exit on Route one thirty?
Yes, they can.
It's conservation area, that's all.
They already have, that's all they have.
They got the permit?
Yes, they have.
They do not have a permit. So right now, what's going to happen is not only to, sure, sure.
It's proposed, and then it's seeking approval, but they haven't moved forward with it yet since they don't know if they're going to get the zoning.
But who would they have to get the approval from best, by, actually?
Uh, no, it would be the state.
It would be the state.
It's a wildlife issue.
The plan right now, not only are we putting in two seventy-foot structures with bright lights, and the entrances are going to be out in the most densely populated area, an area that the Cape Cod Commission has already said is one of the busiest intersections in town. They're proposing fifteen hundred parking spaces. So even if it's half full, you're going to be adding seven hundred and fifty spaces to this area that is absolutely full of children and families, and the lights, and the noise. And I didn't know that Mr. Haney was going to be talking about the development itself, or I would have brought all my material. I'm a professor at Cape Cod Community College. I've been working with the dean down there, one of the dean's, Dean Cody, I don't know if any of you know him, he's on the tech council. Trying to discuss other industries that could come into the town of Sandwich, into this area here, to provide full-time, good-hanging jobs to keep the young people here, not just for the tourists, not just the service jobs that we already have, the room cleaners, the part-time coaches, et cetera, et cetera, but actually full-time jobs. So I would ask the board to please vote against this, that it will absolutely impact every person over here. The three citizens that wrote to you are three citizens who work under the committee, including Amanda Sullivan, who developed the website, who pulled the triangle website. So none of them live in the area. I have a lot of my neighbors here.
Then may I not speak?
A lot of my neighbors here tonight that are asking me to please reconsider that we are not against development, not by any stretch, but we can do better than having another tourist venue here that ruins the quality of our life and survival.
The gentleman in front.
Yeah, Tim Rice, just wanted to make sure. Could you, Mr. Haney, speak to the Cape Cod Commission's role in this whole process in this intention and presentation? What's the situation with the Cape Cod Commission? And also, do you think the state?
Right, so if this goes through, then they're going to put together a full development proposal package, and then that would go before the Cape Cod Commission, and then it would also go through the D E P process. They have a lot of similar requirements, so there's going to be a lot of parallel submissions. The commission would normally treat this as a DRI, called a regional impact. However, they received approval to go through a development agreement approach, which is for much larger projects. It gives them more time to go through the different phasing of development, and that's, they were allowed to do that. But they still have, they're going to be allowed to do that, they still have to go through the actual process of having all the traffic, all the environmental, everything being reviewed, and then mitigations developed, which is what they have to do. So that process is yet to start. It'll follow this if it goes forward.
And how long of that?
It could be, I would imagine, a minimum of six to twelve months, it could be longer. Yeah, it depends, it largely depends on the speed by which developers, what we requested.
And they detect it, or what is that, move the permits?
Well, they gave it the permits, so they can go to constructions, but at least the town with the project, you know, with the, with the property still to sell or choose how they want to approach it.
Well, hold on a second, did I hear somebody on this side? Yes, the gentleman in back.
Well, thank you. My name is Peter Bushman, three Haringdon. I have several questions from God's to this. One of them is, what have they done to help themselves since they made a purchase and said, they've done nothing? They haven't done an impact study, they haven't done a traffic study, they haven't done anything with wastewater. And to beat the fact is, now they're asking the town to make these presentations for them. They're doing nothing to help themselves, and I don't see where this project is going to do anything for the town for a long time. At the meeting of the Cape Cod Commission, when they were there, they said it would be, once they get started, seven to ten years before we saw any benefits of this project. And I just don't see where it's going to help us at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you address how this is going to work? You're here, is CJ in the sandwich?
Thank you very much.
With the current sandwich noise, how's that going to work with the, you know, the announcements that you're going to be able to hear, you know, like a mile away at night? I mean, how does that impact the sandwich noise ordinance that currently exists?
Well, I can tell you that it won't impact the sandwich noise any more so than the pop Warner game is doing right now, and our noise ordinance, I believe, is eleven o'clock.
I think it's ten.
So, ten? No, I think it's eleven. Either way, they have to abide by the noise regulations, so at ten o'clock, you won't hear the noise. Or hopefully, at ten o'clock, you won't hear the noise any more so than you would, I mean, I live at Triangle Circle, so I can listen to the full pop Warner game on my backboard. So.
I just wanted to ask you on that same, is what Mr. Shaken just said, actually, it is a little different than pop Warner because you're talking seven, it feels going at a time versus.
I understand that.
But I know what you mean by the out.
The out, it's just the level two while it's going on. I don't, I don't believe that it's a decibel that would, but whatever, they have to abide by the town bylaws. So if there becomes a problem with the noise, then it has to be a blessing. Do I have anybody else on this side? Yes, gentlemen, I have to go back now.
My name is Eric Small, six yards from the land. I would simply urge this board and all in authority of this town to keep the height of buildings and structures as they are right now.
Thank you. And this side, yes.
I don't know what you're saying about work though, Dan. Can I ask?
You can do whatever, as long as you give your name and address.
My name is David over in Birmingham, Main Street. Can we go back to the slides again? I'm just going to get that roll of information, I just, you know.
Well, do you have a particular slide that you wanted to see?
Well, I quite have a comment on every single slide, so.
Um, no, we're going to go through every single slide. Did you write down any notes?
Well, first of all, the first note is, is we sold the piece of land at a greatly discounted value.
We actually haven't sold it, we haven't purchased the sale.
A lower amount, and then now we're going to, now we're proposing changing the zoning, which drastically increases the value of that land.
Well, hopefully, that is the reason that they would buy the land, is to increase the value, because right now it's not worth anything.
Well, we're developing, we're going to pay them five million, we can all.
To tell you the truth, although our board does not have a proposal before us, correct? To this day, our board does not have a proposal before us for any development of that. The town has the right to sell the land at any amount that they want to because town meeting gave them that approval, right? So that, we're not, but this board doesn't address that.
No, I'm just saying, it's common, we gave the town the right, we voted, I was very supportive. No, I'm just saying, the point is, we gave the town the right, we voted, right?
If you're trying to sell it, right now that land isn't worth anything because there's nothing left. So whoever puts anything on that land is making it more valuable, that's the whole point.
But they have had higher offers before, they turn down.
Yes, but, but I think to.
Yeah, we're not, that's not what we're here for.
And to put that to rest, I think you have to look at what the net gain taxes is over, say, the purchase price is one thing. What, you know, the purpose of, of this sale for all of us in town has been to derive tax revenues from a source other than homeowners. So the real question is, do we still want to go forward and do that? Are we still, as a town, looking for tax revenues derived from sources other than homeowners? Now, the sale price of this piece of property, you can argue about, but, you know, one, that five million dollar price tag also brought with it housing, that brought with it expenses caused to the town for that development. But you're, not for, not in the way housing come, not, not in the way housing does. So you can't really say, well, one purchase price will be compared to the other one, you're comparing apples to oranges. But what's going to go on here, and what was going to go on there with the five million dollar present? Quite frankly, I am shocked people think that a, a mall, a McMash common's mall is a more benign use than this. I'm shocked.
Why are you shocked?
Because you think that that's going to generate fewer traffic, less parking, more, you know, fewer car trips a day than what, you know, with a McMash Commons style development?
You know what, before we have this discussion, I can only have one person talk about it, so that's number one, Jay is talking. Number two, this board is not going to address the purchase price of that piece of land at all. And we don't have a proposal before us. We have a vision. And, and that vision is asking us to look at the zoning that exists, and if their vision, when it eventually comes before us, had specific improvements to what they feel are improvements, that's what they feel are improvements to our zoning, then they would like it to be done sooner rather than later. So that is what we're looking at. We're looking at, do we want to make these zoning improvements changes, not improvements to any kind of what the applicant or what would maybe be an applicant, because again, we don't have a proposal, that's what we're looking at. Ground mounted solar and heights. So, so that's, so that's why I'm not going to let you go through every single solitary, all of the economic development and everything else.
But if our town made a decision on the height and the use, what happened, basically, and there's no detailed study, and I know we say the Cape Cod Commission didn't do all that, but you're asked to literally ask to make this decision at what, the November town meeting, maybe?
Maybe, maybe.
Before any of this stuff is out, and then once we make that decision, the Cape Cod Commission takes over, correct?
Correct. And within the decision, our meeting here tonight is for a development, for any development going forward in this area, does this forward, does the town, do we feel that the town would benefit by increasing a height or allowing ground mounted solar to take? It could be this proposal, or it could be a different proposal. So, say it's a hospital that ends up going in there, or say it's a rehab that ends up going in there. Would we, as a town, like to see them able to go to a seventy-foot height, a big building? Do we want to act on that now so that the zoning is in place, or do we want to wait until we actually see the proposal? That's what we are talking about here.
I actually, I actually posed a safety question to the police and the fire chief, and I have a letter from Chief Black, and I have an email from the fire chief, I can't pronounce his name, and both of them say that they don't think it's an impact on public safety, which is ridiculous, that you can't have so many people here. So I would that's a negative. The other thing is, say, if we're going to build a water pressure support, put on a fire, in a seventy-foot building?
We do.
We have the water pressure required.
We do.
Okay. And whether or not we have sufficient, that's a whole other story, but, I mean, the purpose of zoning is to say things are incompatible. I mean, if they want to do this, why don't we do it on the same town as well, because there's no land there.
And it's all protected.
Well, some of it's protected, but I don't agree. I, I think selling the land was a mistake. I think letting it go up seven stories was a mistake, and if now this has been changed further, with a six hundred feet, seven five?
Six hundred fifty.
Doesn't make this a project-specific zone change?
No, with the, because we set, we did the setbacks for them to keep the, if we, if we looked at the height of seventy feet, or sixty-six feet, or whatever, the setbacks that we're looking at would allow it to be that much further from any roadblock.
That was my question. If you make that change, doesn't that make the zone only apply to this project?
Well, it makes it only apply to that piece of project.
That piece of land.
It's the whole piece. It's not just the little white. It's the whole piece, from the tip all the way down, within that section. So it's not just this.
That's a five hundred. The next one shows some suspected little item.
But again, is that the only piece of land in town that's going to qualify for that height?
Yes.
Well, you can see how this, you can see there's, there's pieces of other land.
And what was that?
It's a mix of owners.
So they could turn around and buy that land and make this project more visible from the road, after they get the true, right?
Well, they can't make it any more visible than that six hundred and fifty foot section.
They'd have to respond to an RPA right now. The only person to respond is to an RPA is.
No, the surrounding land behind the shopping plaza, who owns that land when they turn around and sell it to a private company or?
No.
They, they wouldn't sell it on land?
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
If you're privately owned land in between this project the town owns and the other buildings, then you're now showing it as a park. If they could not buy that, make a parking lot a more extension, if you change the zoning, will they not clear that big parking lot? Will there waste water treatment right there?
They cannot go to wastewater treatment plant. This is a water recharge district.
So they clear it for water?
So they cannot, they cannot, they cannot discharge the, the athlete.
But could they buy it around the middle parking to make it?
Well, anybody can buy any piece of property in town, buying is available to them in that town, in that, under that zoning, then they can do it. The people who already own that land right now, the, uh, Canterbury, Canterbury, uh, not Canterbury, yeah. Yeah, no, Howard H. Canterbury, all the shops on Route Six, uh, on, excuse me, on the Two Road, Pizza by Evans, um, it's not Pizza by Evans, it's, you know, all those shops. Every one of them could buy more land going back if it was for sale and they wanted to, and they could put more parking there. So it's not just, can these people buy? Anyone can buy.
Right, but my point is, but they could buy it if it was available when one of you came. And that's not typical of the world. They bought a bunch of unrelated parks and put them on the other building typically.
But they, but they can't put a hotel, a structure anywhere but within, but this six hundred and fifty foot section.
There's a building that's a little bit of a street, right?
Well, there's going to be fields in there anyways.
Not there, the field down there.
But I'm not sure what that has to do with.
Because you're saying it's every buffer.
No, we didn't say that. We said it has a setback. We didn't say anything about a buffer. We said the buffer zone is the setback from the street, and so what we're saying is, is that, I didn't say that there was going to be trees in front of it. I just said it has a setback.
My point is, if it's landed in a building, it could be sold into repairs.
Of course, if it's privately held land, it can always be sold.
No, they have it on the comments, the developer has been, it's on there somewhere, has said that they, they were going to look for assistance with the wastewater and assistance with the traffic mitigation.
But private, in other words, private development, private owners of private businesses and private structure. The town has not offered for, if there's any conversation whatsoever, about a wastewater treatment facility for this particular piece of property. As a matter of fact, there is no plan right now for a wastewater treatment facility, as the gentleman in the back stated, for this piece of property. There's none that's been.
Why would anyone put a zone there without the wastewater?
Well, there has to be.
Well, you have to consider that all zoning put in place is usually before a project is proposed, so the all, all zoning is done prior to development happening, so it's going to be in place. It's about planning. It's about anticipating what you want to have done and putting it in place. The town has shown that they want this, this land developed, and thus far, this is the closest thing we've seen to a possible development project. It requires this height.
And as far as the wastewater treatment facility, it's not that they're not going to have one, it's just that it hasn't been proposed. It has to be proposed, and it has to be approved. This is just one step. And again, we're not here tonight to discuss wastewater treatment because that's a project that they'll have to address on.
Well, you can't have a service for.
Jay, can I, I'm going to give you about five more minutes to address maybe a couple more, and then we have a lot of people here.
You can't have a service for, and then they're going to say, well, we're working on the right location.
Excuse me.
I just, I just, I just have to talk to the town. Excuse me. I, I feel that we're a similar off track. We're not the proposer of the seventy-foot building to you. We're the proposer, we're discussing the zoning change, and I feel like we're being very specific about this proposal that I know nothing about to be going on. So here, the board may ask a potential zoning change from the town. We're not talking about a development, we're, we're helping.
They require two-thirds of the town voters to agree with this, well, it's not, we're not going to decide tonight to give somebody the right to build a site or a building. We're going to make, we're going to propose a, a zoning bylaws that gets presented to all the voters of the town, and if two-thirds of all of those voters agree that that's a good idea, then it gets passed.
Specifically to a zone, no proposal, no building.
Right, no, that's right. It's not saying.
Well, it could be for us if there wasn't somebody out there that was looking to build something at seventy feet. But because it is, now, the way you plan is to be proactive, so if you start building the pieces. So if this proposal actually comes to fruition, this is a piece that already exists for, for this proposal. It also will exist for any other proposal that comes forward for this piece of property.
And the point we're seeing involved is staying right across the street from the park that they want to put the public safety building, which I don't feel.
Again, we are not going to discuss that.
That's kind of a traffic issue.
Well, let's.
This isn't across the street from the park.
Isn't the entrance off the park anymore? If you want us to.
And isn't it also the fact that, but regardless of, you know, who develops it or what the developer has, that developer is going to have to mitigate wastewater, so if a treatment plant is necess, is necessary, that's when that will kick in, and the town won't pay for any of it. If the roads have to be wide, if turning lights have to be installed, if, if traffic lights have to go up, that applicant has to pay for it all. The town doesn't pay for any of it.
Well, I actually already paid for it, I just kind of went ahead and told the person I was paying for.
Again, we are, so we're not going to go back to the cost of the land.
But we did this now, we just, you know.
Well, if you don't, if you put your house on the market, it doesn't suffer the initial asking price, you never lower the price to, what do you do?
And that's not what we're.
I know, that's, I mean, that's just.
Okay, Jay, do you have one last thing?
Sure.
No, I, I get it.
Okay, fine. The gentleman in the blue, and then after, up in back here.
Thank you. Blair, Michael Wyatt, two yards from the land, remember the findings you made. Is there going to be a shadow study required, so make sure that any of these butters are not impacted by seventy feet?
Butters of what this would be?
Right. I understand about the setbacks, I understand about the point of what, point of view, but I think there should be a shadow study. I think it is required that the Cape Cod Commission regulations. Number two, Blair, you don't mind, seventy feet is the top of the roof. A week, a week, normally, this development would have air conditioning, mechanical equipment on top?
Well, actually, seventy feet for the, was the, seven, we have the ability to change that. And we've already thought about that when we were talking, when we were discussing bringing this forward. We discussed it, we discussed residential versus fieldhouse. So the fieldhouse will have no mechanicals on top because that's just the way the fieldhouse is built. A residential, such as a hotel, they would. So we've already kind of thought about that and how the seventy feet would be the maximum, and that would include architectural pitch, it would include mechanicals, it would include anything that creates a portion of the building.
Anything soft with pit, antenna, dish.
And because this hasn't gone through the Cape Cod Commission, of course, there hasn't been an architectural drawing as to whether or not it should be in keeping with a Cape Cod law. So whether or not it would be a flat roof to support the mechanicals or a pitch with mechanicals off, off-building, ground-mounted or whatever, all of it, no matter what, would be included in seventy feet. That would be a requirement of our.
So if I can see in your explanation, Greg, and it's that seventy feet total will include the top or anything above that roof?
I think all of us here would felt that that was the case.
And I think, what is it, if I could just inject a couple of design and planning issues, is that many mid-height, and I call seven, uh, seven stories, six stories, mid-height, are developed with ungrade mechanicals because they could be screened and be part of a, something that does not limit the architect to do what normally they might have done thirty years ago. Seven-twenty, I'd like to make again, because I believe very strongly in this. This isn't jobs and a tax revenue item. I know it's not important, but it is exceptionally important. And to consider that the developer of whatever is going to be proposed here now and in the future is not doing any work. I think it's a crazy assumption, because to put just the ideas together and orchestrate a larger, a major piece of development like this, regardless of how many fields they have and how many buildings they have, takes an enormous amount of brain trust and investment at a high risk. So for those who think that nothing's going on, one developer or any other developer is crazy. And finally, I would say is that to develop something that is this complex is normally a three- to five-year process. And to think that this isn't going to happen within the next decade, I think it's very short-sighted, and people might be against this project.
Well, the only caveat I would say to that is, most developments of this size aren't taking place on Cape Cod, and they haven't had to go through Cape Cod Commission.
Well, that is.
That's additional to, to and have to do.
Put some dollar signs on that.
So to get back to, thank you very much, we're to the right.
Yes, my name is Patricia Seven, about every forty-one years, still there. I just have a couple of points I'd like to make. We're talking about living back on the residence, the whole South Sandwich area is a residential area. And that's monstrous, it's getting caught in the middle of us. We don't want it. Next, what about the residents who live on Tom's Way? It's a community of handicapped, lower-income people, they love the complex there, and they were right on the edge of it, and they're living in terror with the noise and the lights that it's going to flip with them. As far as full-time jobs, we need full-time, well-paying, year-round, permanent jobs to support families, young families. We need to bring in more young families. This will produce none of those. Maybe a management for the hotel, groundskeepers, house cleaners, bedmakers, those are not jobs to support the family. Those are just general jobs, but we need good jobs. We need to bring in young families. Now, what can I bring in with a sports complex? No regard, we have talked and begged and said questions to the board of selection, we've written letters, we've done all kinds of things over the last two years. They ignore us totally. The town, the sandwich government ignores the people totally. We have been asking for them to, they totally ignore South Sandwich, Jellies Sandwich, which is totally invisible.
I had several meetings with a lot, a lot of listeners, you know, I did sit down with a lot of people. I had several meetings with a lot of people. You know, as a town player, I've spoken to a lot of people.
You have to let some of these agents do it. The other thing is, the water tower, it's not in a residential neighborhood, it doesn't make any noise, so even if it's tall, it's quiet. And one thing, the, the plan that you're showing is not the one that they brought to the Cape Cod Commission. So those are the points I wanted to make. Thank you.
And that just goes. And that just goes again to our, the complexity of our issue is that we do not have a proposal.
Exactly.
We have a vision, we don't have a proposal, and we're planning to the vision, so...
I'd like to go in there and say, please, say no.
To my left.
Just went through seventy-eight, Joe Road, where you said...
I know right where you want to go.
All right. So maybe this says, more than higher, it's nowhere to all pass. So I'd ask to say no, because I can't sell the house to build this thing. I know it's gonna be developed within seventeen years, but this was a town, we needed a wooden sign, that's seventy feet.
Thank you. No, I'm gonna wait on Eugene until some...
Well, we probably, one drive sandwich, this plan of going, why did we change the zoning to over thirty-five feet? Now, I would come back and change it.
No, no, we didn't, thirty-five feet has been our zoning.
Right, and we created the zoning while over thirty-five feet, right?
No, the town has always had the zoning of thirty-five.
Right, and that's all, right?
Yes.
Well, yeah, it was changed when the town wanted, right?
Yeah, I think maybe, at the same time, we did it for the, in the R2 district as well, for the, for the small.
You had changed it just recently, right? That's why, so thirty-five should stand fine, if you go to seventy feet, it goes by the LCP plan, it violates, it could have said it's supposed to be a village setting, bottom of seventy, seven-story building can become a village setting. And if this developer should go away, somebody else would come in, and you could have five seventy-foot buildings standing there, looking at it. That's why I'm dead-set against it, it should stay as it is, let them try and get five or take that. And I can't find any information that says the fieldhouse has to be sixty-six feet tall.
It, it, just to the point about five buildings, seventy feet tall, I would have to go back to RFP, it can be sold to someone differently, and they proposed that, we can reject that proposal, so it's not a, you gotta take five-story, five buildings, it's just, again, keep in mind that we own the parcel, we control what development is.
But it also, it's important to note that this board will be online to your site plan review following the Cape Cod Commission's...
Oh, yeah, it's got several...
I understand, but I'm...
Whatever proposal is going to be, it's gotta jump through a hundred hoops before anything...
I don't know if it's complicated, but it's gonna seem like it'll be a...
And to the left.
And I'm in that book, two seventy-foot road, I've lived in Sandwich my entire life, I grew up, my parents are Carol and John Baldi, they left town because the taxes are high. I don't think this is the answer to the taxes. I grew up in Lincoln Hills, I used to ride my bicycle, create a big household, there was nothing else to a road, I built the house seventeen years ago, knowing that that was a busy road, and it was my star of all, things have gotten expensive, and I'm staying there because I'm smart, my house is small, so I can afford my taxes, I'm not building a monster, monster house, because I know I can't afford that. But anyway, I'm on that road, I was told that you couldn't even put a wooden sign, and now you wanna put this in Sandwich, and this in Sandwich. I mean, I'm all about sports, I have the sun, and we travel, we go, we go all over the place for his basketball games, but I don't want one over the bridge, I don't want it coming here to Sandwich. Do you want it to look like Hyannis? Do you want, do you want that in my home? I mean, I'll buy maybe some deals and something, but you know, you're gonna bring in the people that don't care about Sandwich, they're gonna bring that trash, and they're gonna bring that team, and the teams are gonna fight, because you know, all these single sports are all good, but you know what? If there's a team that doesn't like another team, they're gonna win their games, and they're gonna have fights, and that's not what Sandwich is about.
Then you are... The woman in the green?
Hi, Jennifer Harvey, I'm at Five Hundred Way, and I'm just, I have a question, because I'm a little confused. One minute, we're saying, are we voting this zoning change for this particular project, or is this a zoning, so...
Let me explain. If this particular project wasn't out there, we probably wouldn't be looking at this particular zoning right now. So, due to the vision of this project, we're looking at how we would plan this, this. Their vision says that they're probably gonna have buildings that will be up to seventy feet tall. Would we consider changing the height requirement in this district to allow for that, so that at some point, when they go forward, that's already done? So it's not necessarily project-specific, but the reason the project is out there is why we're kind of re-examining this area.
And so, one of the things we're thinking about is that it's to the town's benefit to maybe have seventy-foot houses, is one of the issues, right?
Exactly, is it to the town's benefit to have a seventy-foot building in this area?
And so, I guess I get confused when we have the potential to have seventy-foot buildings in a different area of town, but we wanna make it six hundred and fifty feet to preclude that, or to prevent that from happening in that area, why is it better to happen in that particular area?
Well, I can just tell you that if the board looked at the seventy-foot structure, and you, we know that the BL2 extends to the, what we call the medical throughway, and it's also where we've approved the medical marijuana out of the district, it's probably at the highest point of Sandwich. When you crest that hill, you see everything, the steeple, the harbor, everything. So a seventy-foot building coming off of Route Two, I don't think is step... Exit Two, Exit Two. We, the board didn't feel that, first of all, there was enough property there, because it's a very small section of BL2, and second of all, maybe that's not the best location for it. So when we set the setbacks, we made sure that that area in, at the very, that that little piece of BL2, only other piece of BL2, would be exempted from that. So it brings it way down into basically the lower, as you're coming back down. So the visual impact of a seventy-foot building in South Sandwich is much less than one that would be at the crest of that hill.
And so, it's just coincidental that when we do six hundred and fifty feet back, it just happens to really be mainly this new development and...
No, as a matter of fact, we don't have to do a setback at all to take out that little piece of property, because there's a public ancient byway that runs right down Middle Lake, and basically subdivides the two pieces of property. So under no circumstances could, after we thought about the setbacks, we realized, through Josh, actually, in your research, that that piece of property could never have had a seventy-foot building on it anyway. But the other reason that we're doing setbacks is because of the properties that already exist, the development that already exists on the two-a-road. At a five-hundred-foot setback, it basically bisected the back end of some of those properties, and a six-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, it completely took them out of the picture, and again, gave them all the buffer.
And, and sorry to some of our questions, so is the reason why it's not on the town, the special town meeting yet, is, does anybody know why that that's not on?
We're in the process. It can't go to special town meeting unless we recommend it to the selectmen to put on the special town meeting.
Okay. I'm opposed to this project, I'm opposed to seventy-foot buildings in that area, I, I don't wanna get into the tax incentives or anything like that, I don't believe that this will benefit the town in the way that people think it will, I don't think it's gonna bring in the tax money, I don't think it's gonna bring in the jobs, I think all it's gonna end up doing is destroying that nice area of town, and I think there are other things that we could look for, other businesses, other options, so, thank you.
Charles, please, again. As a comment, just something I offer, I'm neither for or against the proposal, I don't really know very much about it, but this board is concerned only with the zoning, they cannot answer questions with regard to sewage disposal or anything like that. A developer, and I don't want the developer, first has to get the most important things cleared to proceed. This developer, or any other, would not go through all of the work, the Cape Cod Commission, Environmental Protection, et cetera, and then last, come here and find out, oh my goodness, we can't get the zoning thing, we've just spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on all days out permits, and now we find out we can't get something. So from the standpoint of a developer, any developer, they're gonna wanna get the zoning first. With respect to the views, getting back to the more important topic of this board, something that is done all of the time, and, your name again, sir, is?
Claire.
Claire, is called a view shed. If each one of you wondered what it would look like, that seventy-foot hotel, ask the board to do a view shed study, or make the developer to do a view shed study, where each of you could pinpoint where you live, or where you stand, or where you are there, a photograph is taken with a certain millimeter lens, and then a computer-generated study puts that hotel in that view shed, so you can see exactly what it would look like from each individual location that you're interested in. Then you can make a really intelligent decision, is that gonna affect, can I even see it? Oh, again, that's ugly, I don't want it, but in any case, even if this board approves going forward to the selectman, all of you can show up at town meeting if you don't like it, and vote against it, and that'll stop it right there. Anyway, Claire, view sheds, have any of them done, with cameras, and then computer-generated views, all right?
Yeah, we, we spoke to them about it, and, you know, the location, the exact location of the buildings could get changed at any point during the permitting process, so view sheds would change. We tried to, maybe six hundred and fifty foot properties, about some area within the site, to shift the buildings and not fall outside of seventy, what would, the area that was designated as seventy feet, but a view shed would be, only, only capture a moment of time of where those buildings are now, it would actually, it might not actually represent what ends up getting approved.
And just as an addendum to that, if, if the, if what we're seeing here, say, something changed, it's not, not a bait and switch. As you can see, even if you put a house on a piece of property, it's gonna change compared to where your septic would have to go, where the water has to come in, where the utilities would have to come in. With this particular project, it would be where the outfall pipes would have to go, where the sewage system would have to be placed, so there's a lot, there, there would be maybe some leeways to where some of the buildings would go. And again, as I said, a vision, we don't see a proposal before us. So a proposal is kind of hard and fast, again, we're looking at a vision. Left one more time, and then back to Eugene.
Hi, my name is Tim Cooney, I'm at Fort White Street, I've been a resident of town since nineteen eighty-six, and I support this amendment, or this proposal. Reason I support it is, obviously with Mr. Haynes, that this is really not a new proposal. I've lived in town since nineteen eighty-six, sat on the SEIC as chairman, I've, Chamber of Commerce for two consecutive terms, as vice chairman, I was involved with the LCP Committee that put the initial proposal together. We're twenty years into this, folks, town meeting has voted on proposals affecting this property, known as in four or five times, directly and indirectly, and other four or five times related to its creation, and the approval of the LCP, the approval of the SEIC, approval of granting the chamber access to promote economic development in town, more recently, we just added an assistant economic development person to help promote sound and sensible economic development of our community. I think the Cleveland makes a lot of good points in terms of, you know, views and different logistical issues that can be sorted out for the residents in the community. This piece of property has gone to RFP four separate times. The costs, the man-hours, the brain trust, the month, volunteer hours that it's gone into, the thought process of here is immeasurable. I pay an awful lot of taxes in this town, as many of you do. We have a lot of opportunity before us with the development of the Marina, which, and other parcels that we've been discussing for over two decades, and maybe longer. We need to be more proactive and responsible stewards of this community in a sensible way. I understand that all the residents in that area, just like any other area of town, if they're putting something down on any sandwich, I'm sure I'd have some real concerns about heights and, and traffic and everything else, but we are a long way into this process already. We have been before the Cape Cod Commission, they have unanimously supported our effort to go forward, we have, we have a unanimous vote from the Board of Selectmen to accept the purchase and sale agreement. We've had, you know, countless public hearings on what's due to create more tax revenue for this community. Sports, you've heard our, our town manager say a dozen times that they've looked at this ten ways to Sunday, and sports recreation is probably the best fit, not probably, but it is the best fit that they can possibly come up with this. Our assistant town manager is here today, he would tell you how many hours he personally has put into this. We need to move forward. Now, if changing the zoning for solar and height will make this property, as you said, more attractive and more valuable, then we need to do this. It's part of the LCP directive that's now over six years old. So if you don't like it, you can go to town meeting and vote against it, but the responsible thing to do is to put it for the voters' town meeting. I support it, thank you. And I have to go, because I gotta put my kids to bed.
My understanding is always the notion of visual, that was about especially tax, so everything that everyone's sitting in the leg is on point, it's not what some of us have about to be naughty for. Every point that everyone made is an impact of this progress. The general, how's it down part of the town? So is anyone studying as far as what the damage to certain properties, are gonna down, will it offset the tax income? I mean, I know everyone's talking about the height, but there's way more to it than that, and the fact that so many people are talking about other points is, the problem with town is they haven't had one public hearing once, you know, they have no private meetings, people, but they haven't had one public meeting. So what we're talking about today, and you're saying people are at points, frustrated, because there's been no public hearing on the entire project. We voted against the selectmen for the right to sell, I think a lot of people regretted giving too much, too much power, and they gave great up for us, in my opinion, they
You've had a narrow process, you've been held around the road. Now, my understanding, and also mentioned the number of the miles, there is no proposal or whatever in front of you, so I guess like, and it sounds like it's gonna take a, a while for things to even work its way through, whether it be Cape Cod Commission or anything. What's the urgency to make it so that it goes to the special town meeting immediately? Why doesn't, why don't we wait a little bit to see how things are going? Because as we've seen in this town, as was mentioned even previously, when we make decisions based on some sort of plan that, again, that we did with the selectmen, and allowed them to have the freedom to do what they did, and the number of people, like the guy who was saying, what they did, you're stuck with that decision. So if you try to have this go forward, and yet for some reason, this proposal doesn't make it through the Cape Cod Commission or whatever, and it doesn't make it through the special town meeting, who knows what else potentially could be there, and that could open up a whole other set of canors. So, I mean, I would recommend that, you know, this doesn't move forward until more concrete plans or whatever have been decided to go forward, because again, we don't wanna get in that trap of opening something up and have a larger issue later on, when we don't know where we're really getting into here right now.
Any other questions? Anybody else?
Yes. I just wanted to give you about a couple of points. On the taxing, it's an average of ten dollars and twenty-five cents per month for a family. On the jobs, they, in a companion type of sports complex owned by the same developer, there are four... There are four full-time jobs, the rest of them are contracted and part-time. I'm hoping that we will not move the zoning forward, because there is other industry out there not reaching up. Where?
Well, I know, I had to, you know, second what Tim said, I've been here since nineteen eighty-two and listened to this since nineteen eighty-two.
Yeah.
Where are they? I mean, I agree with you. If we could scrap this and bring in some very high-tech company with, you know, a high fifty full-time jobs, by all means, but where are they? We've been waiting for them for thirty years.
It's generally, we record this, and if everybody's talking at once, it's a jumble and you can't understand it.
But we do have, I know at the college, and among other groups in the Cape Cod area, the neighbors groups, the tech groups, we are working to get those companies here. I would hate to see this beautiful piece of centrally-located industrial land in Sandwich used for something like this. And it could be used for something that would bring and keep young families in. If we don't develop this for a good company, I'm not even sure of the light manufacturing or the three D printing or whatever it happens to be, we have no other land in Sandwich to do that. Right now, we have a STEM program at the Sandwich High School. We're starting robotics program. It's wonderful, but they can't come back to Sandwich to work. I graduate students all the time, we just started airline manufacturing, we just started manufacturing in general. Other companies all over the Cape are using those skills to see new companies and new jobs, not Sandwich. And I hope that they'll consider that something that is really not appropriate in this area.
Can I ask a question? And if you can just do a nod, if everybody doesn't have a seat now. No one here addressed the solar. So am I assuming that you all have absolutely no objection to the ground-mounted solar?
I have solar in my house and haven't had an electric bill in two years. So I have to say.
This is large-scale ground-mounted solar. It is currently, you have it at the college, you actually have it over, at his campus over the...
I'm sure it's in on students that are part of the...
So basically, nobody here was gonna address the solar? Jane, I could have bet.
Is it gonna be taxed exempt?
No.
It's not?
Well, not at present. You mean, if we approved that part of it, could somebody, and by tax exempt?
I mean, property.
If we weren't talking about any other ground-mounted solar rotate that we already have in town, we are seeing huge, huge benefits from it. Both from its sale of electricity back to us, it has been the biggest and best investment the town has ever made. So as far as tax exempt, that doesn't come into play with ground-mounted solar, because the town would actually be a benefit, we would benefit from that. By buying?
You're purchasing it already?
Yes.
One up for some...
Don't you know anything about the one up on off of us?
I also know about energy credit trading, where they sell carbon credits off of...
Well, that, Jane, is completely...
No, I'm saying, that's...
She's talking about the snake pond project, do you know about that? That the town buys their homes from?
She has to pay when it's a solar, that's all they pay for solar, because they continue to pull this out, even if it's a carbon credit. So you have to...
No, no. Okay, fine.
If I may address Jane's question, no, what happens if they do reverse meter? We have it on our house. If we produce more than our...
I understand that, you don't cover credit trading?
I do. This is something different.
You're an electric plant.
This is an academy trade investment here.
Yeah. You can sell the excess electricity, so the town gets it back.
Right, but they also sell the carbon credits.
Well, that's right, yeah. Yeah, I guess, part of the confusion was that because all the talk was about the zoning, it wasn't addressed in like the presentation a little bit, where the solar was even gonna be filming now?
No, I didn't, I didn't mention it.
Sorry, I think that's part of the reason why, I mean, I thought that was actually...
And I had actually asked you which, when you were gonna be addressing the actual solar portion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Mostly because the height generates the conversation, but...
And as far as this project goes, it would be based on whether or not this project went through and where the buildings were located?
Yeah, this is ground-mounted solar, and what the idea was is that you, was that they found a hockey rink where you have basically ground-mounted solar over top of the parking areas. So it'd be like creating almost like a little carport, so they'd be on poles over top of the parking areas.
So that's what would happen here?
That's the proposal, yeah. Ground-mounted solar is different than roof buildings. It's literally ground-mounted, meaning it's not up on a roof. That's entirely a separate type of solar use.
I'm sorry, you propose, because this was for ground, I thought...
Yes, ground-mounted.
Yeah. So it'd be over top of their parking.
How about there's another twenty ten on the playing field?
I'm sorry, what's that?
No, there's nothing in here, by our zoning bylaw, which this has to apply, this is applied to. This is just allowing our ground-mounted solar rotate zoning bylaw to be allowed in the BL2 with a, well, it's by right, so...
No, this is not a special permit. But they could put it on the building if they wanted.
I think they have got their carport and they're on the playing field.
They could choose to do that. They could put it on the building.
No, in other words, they can build a green building.
Right.
But they can't put a ground-mounted solar rotate unless it's allowed.
Right.
Putting it on your building is allowed. Anybody can put it on their house, you know that. You didn't have to get a special permit for that.
Oh, wow.
The building's not, like, as loud as, yes, you move, but that's...
State, state law, yes. Maybe just a couple, let's see what else wants to speak, just a couple of quick points.
Well, the board's gonna talk about this, but go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I think we can go back and forth for a long time about quality jobs and developing prospects. Fifty-six-eight, this is a large site. Try and hope that businesses, little businesses are gonna come in and fill that all out. That's pretty wishful thinking. There isn't market conditions, there isn't market studies that support that. Actually, to the contrary, ample market studies, Michelle, were very limited to what Cape Cod, not Sandwich in general, Cape Cod is going to attract a lot of businesses. As I said in one of my bullets, if we try to subdivide, we have to build the roadways and the infrastructure to do little businesses along the way. So we're gonna have to make millions of dollars of upfront investment on speculative development. Is that what the town wants to do with some of that taxpayer dollars? It's been debated, it's been talked about. Because businesses, tech businesses, they don't need more than a few thousand square feet. They really don't. And you have fifty-six-eight this year. The only other thing, we can debate a lot of the stuff, a lot of the points were brought up, but I think the most important piece that I've been saying, and I'd like to say again, is that they have so much more to do besides just this, besides this solar proposal. In terms of Cape Cod Commission, the meat process, their own market study, they're still working on. You know, remember, we signed the works and sales agreement back in December. So it's been a lot. This has been around for a while. And they've been working on their market study, they had to go through and deal with the Cape Cod Commission, and how are they gonna build permanent ERI, so there's been things that have been done. And they put together those concept plans as well, that's all stuff that's been done. And then they still have to do their own market study to make sure that this works. They responded to our P with an idea, but they have to make sure that it works, and they're still working on that. And in addition to that, because of market conditions, they have to get through the permitting process and close the Cape Cod Commission. There may be so much mitigation involved that it doesn't become a viable project. So there's still a lot of steps that need to be done, so many checks and balances, so many public hearings that are still not to be done. My hope, my request is that this board allows this project to at least see the light of day, at least to see if it's a good fit for Sandwich through the Cape Cod Commission process and the meat process. Because that's where we're really gonna get into wastewater and traffic and things like that, and shadow studies and things that way. So I'm hoping that it will make a positive reputation. I think we all know that if we vote it down now, if we vote it down at town meeting, we'll never find out if it's a good fit for Sandwich. But if we allow it to go forward, we'll be able to at least explore that. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but I think we're gonna, you know, for a while.
Yeah.
I wouldn't make a motion.
No. We need to talk, because the next motion would be to close the public hearing, I'm not ready to do that.
Definitely, just to let you know, this was scheduled for October sixth, so it gave you an opportunity to have the public testimony. Here at all, you can choose to or not close public hearing, you can go to the twentieth, and we can still make the warrant for the sixteenth. That's why it was scheduled for tonight, so please don't feel, from any of us, that there's pressure for you to make a decision tonight, or how you wanna handle it. You do have the twentieth if you need it, and still make the warrant for the sixteenth.
Well, this presentation before, is it posted on the camera side?
I was wondering that too.
It's on, I think I just finished putting it together, it's ninety-seven, put it out there.
Yeah, that would help, yeah. And go ahead, Mrs. Stainbrook, would you just tell, the tape recorder, who you are?
Would you just say, we're on Fox Mountain Road, and I think that you should, as a board, consider the fact that if you make this decision to change the height, it's gonna apply for whoever, whoever's playing it. And this is Cape Cod, and supposedly people come to Cape Cod to come to Cape Cod, not to have a second-story hotel. Granted, they are there, but what would be wrong with keeping the height restriction how it was and making a little village of Cape Cod-y conder residences? I just don't understand why, I don't know enough about the project to go. I know what happens to neighborhoods when things like this happen. But I'm just saying, I think that you should, as a board, putting a barrier like this seven-story hotel in this area. Thank you.
Is anybody else wanna say? Go ahead.
The last thing I wanted to say is that the gentleman just spoke, I didn't get his name from the SEIC. One of the biggest concerns I had as a resident is that when this RFP came out, it was stated at that time that if a developer was willing to give a voluntary donation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that that proposal would be given preference. It has not set well with me, it still doesn't set well with me. That the decision that's made on the best fit for that RFP for the town of Sandwich is not based, at least partially, on the contribution. That's it, I promise, number one. Thank you.
Can I say one thing too?
Miss Stoy?
Sorry. Again, and I've been here since nineteen sixty-nine, so probably be the bottom if you care, but anyway. What I'm concerned about, when I talk to a lot of people about this, the, I know it's in the paper, but on the side of one thirty, people don't seem to know, this has become a commuter town. And people, when I talk to them, I have a yard sale, people are like, oh, that's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen, or don't let me put something there. And I don't know why it hasn't gotten up to these people. And before you make your decision, I mean, make it where most of us are against it. But there's a lot of people out there that really don't know about this.
To tell you the truth, and I've been here, it feels like I've been sitting here forever. Nobody, nobody usually knows much about the zoning until you get to town meeting.
Yeah.
You people that are here tonight, it's very unusual that we would have this many people for a public hearing for a piece of zoning. The room is usually empty, as it was a week ago when we talked about the ground-mounted solar rotate for Tucker Road. Nobody reads the paper, you're right about it being a commuter town. Just look at town meeting. I mean, on a normal May, set first, you know, Monday in May, you might get, if there's a big budget issue, four hundred and fifty, maybe five hundred people. That's it. I mean, we are not a well-informed, well-contributing community, really, in terms of. And thank you all for coming to our meeting tonight, because we don't like being all in here. But that's, it's no fault of the town.
No.
We certainly have advertised, there's certainly been a ton of articles written, there was one written in the Sandwich Enterprise, there's been several written in the Cape Cod Times. This weekend alone, it was an article in Cape Cod Times, so...
I don't know what the answer is to that, but that's what's scaring me. When it goes onto the ballot in November, people are going to vote for it, because all they hear about is a decrease in taxes, but they don't know all the other stuff. And I don't know, what would you do about that?
Well, we have two beautiful schools, so I'm now quite a meeting house, or, nobody's at those meetings. And we paid for those for a good long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Does the board want to talk about this? Was that, what? Oh, we're not gonna close the hearing. If we do anything, I'd like to, I'd like to continue the hearing to our next meeting, to the, to October twentieth. Because I, for one, have a lot of, I wanna look at this. I'm sure there'll be more outreach in other people that would wanna come to the October twentieth meeting now that this has been discussed. You know as well as I do that we can make changes to this particular, this doesn't have to go to the selecting like this. We can, we can do anything we want. We can take no R and change it to split people, or non-residential only, or whatever, you know, however. So I'd like to all think about that for a while, I don't wanna close the public hearing. Because I don't know if this is what we wanna follow.
How do you still let it close and get the boards to vote? Why can't you?
We can't, we have to discuss it. Once we close it, then we're voting on whether or not this is what we wanna send over.
Well, what, I mean, in my case, I don't want to wait until the twentieth of the month.
What?
Because there's other things that are gonna be, and I'd like to, if I'm the only soldier in the breeze, so be it, but I'd like to know what the board is thinking.
Well, like I say, our next is a very good point, I mean, we're not denying, by any means, and I think that, you know, if you feel that there's more input that you'd like to get from the public. Personally, I think this should be a matter for voters to decide. I think that there are, you know, I think, you know, like the woman in the back said, you know, do people know? I felt that way about the beach. Like, I felt very concerned, like, are people aware of the fact that our beach is a rolling way that it was? And then when that town meeting happened, and I found myself in the gym basin, because I couldn't fit in the auditorium, and a lot of what people know about this than I, than I thought. I think this is one of those things as well. And I think that in fairness to the town, and everybody who lives in the town, that it shouldn't be just a small group of opponents that sway, you know, how things go. The whole town should be able to say that, you know, yes, we are in favor of this, we wanna go forward with it, or we don't. And two-thirds of them have to be in favor of it for it to go forward. I'll tell you personally, my mind has changed a lot about the seventy-foot thing when somebody told me that the high school is seventy feet tall. And I've never driven by the high school, and it's like, oh my God, what a garish building. Look at that, seventy feet of ugliness. And it probably couldn't be more architecturally plain or ugly, it's in a big, round square. So, you know, that really affected my opinion a lot, because I thought initially the same thing, seventy, seven, seven-story hotel, oh my God, and somebody said to you, you know, the high school is that tall?
But the high school are people that live here, hotels are people that don't.
No, but I'm saying the building, what you see, because you know, the other thing we have to realize is, inside that blue line, that's, that's where, that, inside where that little blue line is, is the only place that that seventy feet can happen. And that's more than a thousand feet on both sides of the road. So there is a precaution taken in terms of, you know, from our point of view, from saying, well, how can we isolate? Because the woman in the back was saying, you know, did you, you know, were you spot zoning or something? And in a sense, we are, we are, in the sense that we're saying, if it's gonna go on, we wanna make, be as considerate as we can to making it as less visible as possible. Doesn't mean it's not gonna be visible, it doesn't mean back at the shopping shop, you're actually right, you go right across the fields to a seventy-story, fifty-seven-story field house. But you're gonna have to be behind shopping shop to get that particular field. You know, it's...
But doesn't it own, specifically the town owning this, do it by the other property owners of town, then unless you're maybe set back, I mean, you're basically handling this, this proposal tonight, because there's one, it only affects one piece of land, right?
It can only affect the BL2.
Right, so if you owned a BL2 in the other area of town...
No, there isn't, it can't... No, there isn't, it can't, the BL2, the only other piece of BL2 in the other area of town is a very, very small, little tiny sliver up at the very top of Route one thirty, on the left-hand side as you're going down into town, where Dr. Woods and the Jordan's had a medical facility there. Those little white buildings all along in there and that little piece of property there, that's the only other section of BL2 in town.
But could that owner say, well, why am I, because you're my landlord?
No, because you don't have to setback.
You don't have to setback.
So you're waiting to setback, but you're, you're
We are specifically putting the setbacks in so that if we're not getting a seventy-foot building.
Jane, would you like, if your house were really close to your property line, you wanted to put an addition on it, and you didn't have to setback? You can't say, well, that neighbor got to put an addition on this house because he did have a setback, and I can't, because I don't have to setback. If you don't have the setback, then don't want to put it.
Does that mean just now? No, you're saying you're putting a setback just for the property, for the other owner.
No, because you're doing a setback for the zoning.
The zoning, right.
Well, then, it's going to stay correct. We're doing a setback for the zoning.
But in effect, there's still the other property.
Of course, there's still the other property.
If you want to do property on your
Who cares? Well, who cares? It's a two, and so a seventy-foot structure.
Is that what you're saying?
It doesn't work that.
No, 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 it doesn't work that. It does.
It doesn't. It's like, it's just like a setback for your house for a house addition. If you, if it really, if you wanted to add on to your house, and your property is too close to the property line, and you didn't have to setback to put that addition on that side of your house, you don't get to do it. And you don't get to sue the town because you don't get to put it on. You just don't have the, you don't have the setback. You don't have all the requirements that it's going to take to do that. These people, that's what we're doing, we're, in a sense, tying the hands of anybody that wants to build a seventy-foot building by saying the only place that it's going to be able to happen is in a B-two district with a six hundred and fifty-foot setback.
And Jane, just for further
That's the only place it can happen.
We did exactly the same thing for strip clubs. There's a setback within the industrial home. So we're not going to sue because somebody can't put a, a, a strip club on Route one thirty next to the Stone River plenty. Just in order to, if the town has done before, then we will be where they should. Nobody's going to sue because they can't put that out there if we chose to do this and if we put those setbacks in. That's zoning, and that's what towns do. They zone to bill, they zone to protest, they zone to claim. And we're planning on never adding a seventy-foot building on that.
They said that zoning can hold the O, if that's one requirement.
If that's all B-two district, if that's all B-two district, that's how you zone. We're not spot zoning, we're saying, anywhere in a B-two, you can build a sixty, a seventy-foot tall building if you have a six hundred and fifty-foot setback in any B-two district. We're not spot zoning, and nobody can sue us for that. We're saying, if you've got a six hundred and fifty-foot setback in a B-two zone, you can build a seventy, seventy-foot tall building. It just so happens that the only B-two zone that meets that requirement is that blue outlined piece of land you see up on the wall. Period. That's not illegal, nobody can be sued. It's a zoning change. The two-thirds of the town's people, not us, are going to either pass a proof or disprove. Well, you just have to work.
It's not there, right?
Let's just have a word. It's not at all.
Uh, yeah, and town council approved it. It's been, it's been meted by attorneys, it's not spot zoning. Whether you think it is or not, doesn't matter if it is.
That's true.
I have this one thing, we're talking about Green Hotel. Down on Route thirty-two, this three-story married engagement, three stories, I just dumped it. But what we're talking, we're talking about more than a hotel, and that's why most of us are here. We're talking about eight planes, there's a field house, two hotels, two condos, two swimming pools, a whole, a whole bunch of, about a little bit of that's going to decimate itself, that's the video.
You're here for the project, that, what you think of as the project, and the fact that this part of it allows some of that. Exactly. Well, we're not going to close the public hearing, because I want to, I personally would hope that the board would not close the public hearing so that we could discuss it more, and we, we can't really stop it if we close the public hearing.
It's our second meeting, it's our
No, it's our, it's not our second public hearing. If, and if I'm in the, in the minority, if, if the board doesn't, if the rest of the board doesn't feel that they have anything more to discuss, and you want to go in and close the public hearing, then that's, that's totally up to you. I just thought that with what we've heard tonight, maybe you'd want to digest some of it. And you actually may hear from people in the street now that this, once this goes out until the hopefully it'll go out accurately in the same town, who, who hope. Or the Cape Codtowns, I mean, there'll be articles, there'll be finding some people. And maybe other people will want to address. So the motion is to continue the public hearing, you said?
I have to make a motion to continue the public hearing until October twentieth, second.
Now, now we have to vote on that. So Bill, are you, are you going to vote yes on that, or you say no? Bill's no, who else?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a, so I have a motion and a, and a second to continue the public hearing to October twentieth, at a time to be designated by seven P M. And it was six, four, and one against. So we're coming back.
Thank you.
So, when you step down.
Still working, buddy.
Oh, right, good. Good luck. I'm going to give this to you. Well, you know, that's what the public hearing's about. Yeah, what I, I, on our agenda tonight, and it had to do with work on it, uh, uh, do you want to make a comment to the zoning laws concerning the sign that they're going to be looking at for the sign of the the, the, like a James Benner. Like this, well, okay, well, if you look at the sign, you know what? I'm going to give you the sign. And I'm going to do a picture of it. There was one in here that showed, right?
Yeah.
The sign as it is, and then the sign as they wanted it. Well, that's, that's picture one. And then, so it goes like, so it would be a little bit higher here, I guess. I don't know, does anyone want to?
Should it be larger, is that?
It's a little bit larger. What they want to do is, is they want to put the second industrial part up. And then Cape Cod up here is still an operation center, and then the primary care, pharmacy. Well, it's a sign thing that they're going to have to deal with because it's within the brush there. But I'm going to hand this back to you. Hopefully, it's the same order that the Cape Cod where the
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Uh, there is a motion and a second to, go home.
Oh.
A judge. Uh, we chose not to make a comment unless well, I, we, we just, everybody just gave it back and said, does anyone want to?
So we'll
What would you like to build that?
Talk to us.
Huh? Talk? I'd like to consider this.
You'd like to? Yeah, we can make the comments.
I think the height is too high, and I think the, it becomes a visual, you know, impairment to the street. Guys, we're kind of close to the
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't voted to do it. We need a motion and a second, we have a vote.
The continued hearing.
Oh, that's closed.
Right, this is a
No, they're trying to, who's talking about the signs?
I'm sorry.
No. So, height, uh, height of the sign. No, we're talking
You know?
No, no.
I found my client's disappointment.
And I don't mind if, if that's, that's a children's on the way or spot. Because you do have to be very careful. I personally went to the, uh, open the symposium that they had at town hall, and you do have to be very careful with the form of the bill as to whether or not we continue to discuss business that is outside of the public hearing venue. So Blair's right on target with letting us know that, hey, as soon as he heard how he was
As long as
No. Well, Bill does have mine. Bill's, Bill's, one of them that we're, Bill Burke feels that the sign is too high.
Well, it's not, it's, it sets a precedent. It's resulting because of the fact that we as a community don't have a sign ordinance, even though this board on several occasions in the past has tried to establish one. And, you know, if we can't
But they got the charge of it. Well, the variance from the sign code. Right, the variance from the sign code. We do have a sign code, but the variance from the sign code comes from the zoning board's appeals, it doesn't come to us. So which is why this is a zoning board appeals issue. And we actually, I mean, we can send over a comment and say the planning, some members of the planning were, were not, not in favor of that, the size of the sign. But, and of course, as we was here last meeting, and Bill and I have been to some of the zoning meetings.
I'll send a one, and, you know, I'll be there next Tuesday.
Okay, well, there you go.
You don't want me to send a comment?
You want, you want to make your own comments at the meeting?
Well
I, I can send a comment by the front of the planning board if you'd like me to.
I don't know if the planning board is the, the right venue, I mean, I
Well, the planning board is asked to make a comment on the application.
I'm a member of that board, and
Yeah, so that's
And when is the last date that you can
Today, right now.
No. When is the last date that comments can go to?
From the planning board, it would have to be voted tonight.
So we would have to vote tonight whether to send comments over to the zoning board.
But you are welcome, as Bill Burke, to come to the meeting and, or, or you can send an email at any time if you're part of the town.
Fine, that's all.
Is that okay?
Okay. Now, there is a motion and a second to adjourn. Do I hear?
A whole favor.
All in favor? All right.